County Public Meeting today, August 22nd, 2017. And to my left is Ron Carroll, County Attorney. To my right is Jillian Sanchez, Assistant Attorney. Would you call the public board, please?
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Conti? Good morning. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Commissioner Jackson, would you lead us into question?
Sir, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carroll, are there any modifications to the agenda this morning?
There are no modifications today.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Conti, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll take them separately. The first one was July 18th, 2017. We had a full board. Entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. The second set of minutes is July 25th, 2017. Commissioner Conti and Commissioner Holland were absent and excused. I'll entertain a motion.
I shall move.
Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jane.
Jane?
Two abstentions, Commissioner Holland and Commissioner Conti. I think I heard approval for the three remaining commissioners. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Now is the time during our public hearing where we have citizen comment if there is anyone who would like to speak on an issue that is not on our agenda this morning. Yes, ma'am, come on down. And we have a light here. You have three minutes, and so the yellow light will come on at two and a half minutes, and then the red light. We'll just ask you to wrap up your comments and just state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Robin Patterson. I live in Saddle Rock, and I represent a group of parents, educators, and others concerned with the ongoing issue of pornography in the sponsored databases of the Arapahoe libraries. We recently sent screenshots to the ALD and board members demonstrating the extreme nature of the material, and we do request that the commissioners provide increased oversight. There are large volumes of obscene material streaming into K-12 databases, including a significant advertising platform for the multi-billion dollar sex industry, with literally hundreds, actually possibly thousands, of sexually graphic articles and, quote, erotic stories, often espousing violence against women and girls. Graphic ads, including how-to descriptions for a myriad of so-called sex toy shops, escort services, and even hardcore porn sites, often with URLs and even with live links. It appears increasingly that database providers such as EBSCO, Gale, and possibly others are deliberately targeting a captive audience of minors as a potential consumer block. They are literally marketing porn to children via K-12 databases that are shielded from top-site filters and piping the material right into our schools and public libraries. The ALD should not have bet this. One of the database providers, EBSCO, has been the subject of intense media scrutiny after being named to the 2017 Duty Dozen List by the National Center on Sexual Exploitation. Our local CBS and Fox News out of Birmingham, EBSCO's headquarters have picked up the story, as have many others. So I've edited this, but I think a picture is sometimes worth a thousand words, and this is typical of the type of material that's being streamed into children's databases at the ALD. This image glamorizes gang rape and depicts a screaming and bleeding woman. I just think it's important for us to understand what we're talking about. EBSCO publicly admits the problems, but blames its customers for misusing their products. EBSCO claims to be developing new filtering software capable of reaching inside the protected databases to filter obscene content. Since this technology does not yet exist, according to EBSCO, they will offer customization service so customers can remove, or if you will, cherry-pick, specific publications. Despite this, the ALD has done very little to clean up its EBSCO products. They are in violation of statutes that require filtering for minors because the databases in question are categorically redesigned to bypass filtering. The report issued by Director Sinidis is misleading. It's clear from the screenshots that we produced last week and shared with the commission that the obscene material continues to stream into recommended homework portals for middle and high school children, as young as 10 years old in middle and as young as 13 years old in high school. The ALD is actively promoting obscene databases to minors as online homework resources. Importantly, some of these databases have actually been removed from EBSCO's own list of recommended K-12 products, under continued pressure from, actually, national and statewide pressure. But the ALD is continuing to use some of these. There are signs in ALD libraries which solicit children as young as 10 years old or grade six to so-called teen computers, and their online recommendations contain materials such as that which I've shared with you. So we urge the board to increase oversight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We have several public hearings this morning. Our first is adoption of the second quarter supplemental appropriation resolution, and our presenter this morning is Leanna Quint, Budget Analyst for our Finance Department, in our Finance Department. Our attorney is John Christopherson, Deputy County Attorney. Mr. Christopherson, would you set the foundation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to state statute, once the county has adopted its annual budget, the board may transfer appropriate monies between funds or between spending agencies within a fund, or if unanticipated revenues are received, the board may elect supplemental budget and appropriation, only after notice of the transfer and/or supplemental appropriation has been published. The record should reflect that notice of 22 amendments to the 2017 budget was published in the August 17th, 2017 issue of the Villager newspaper. Therefore, the board has jurisdiction to consider these 22 amendments to the 2017 budget.
Thank you. Ms. Quint.
Morning, Commissioners. For the 2017 second quarter budget review, we have a total of 22 supplemental requests that were presented at study session on August 7th. In those, we have to appropriate $577,000 in the general fund admin services to correct utility costs and adjust for the increased rates. Appropriate $29,000, about $30,000, in the general fund public works for one additional FTE, a building inspector, too, due to increased workloads in the building division. The sheriff's office has requested to reduce their expenditure budget by $52,000 and authorize headcount by one to eliminate the 24/7 DUI pilot program position. And they have also requested to increase the headcount by two FTE to get an additional sergeant and non-certified deputy in the RISE program, which is offset by their revenue collections. The sheriff's office is also requesting to recognize and appropriate $134,000 in the capital expenditure fund that is transferred from the general fund RISE revenue for the sheriff admin coroner's facility security project and detention lobby security project. Recognize $3,400 in the central services that is transferred from the general fund and appropriate $50,394 in the central services fund for the sheriff's office to purchase a bomb truck. And the sheriff's office is also requesting to appropriate $95,428 in the general fund for additional costs due to increased armed security contract. The Human Services Department is requesting $2.4 million be recognized and appropriated for child adult and protective services remodel project, and this will be reimbursed by state funds. They are also requesting to recognize $554,000 and appropriate $722,000 and increase their headcount by 17 FTE for additional staff in the child protection and legal divisions and for compensation increases for caseworkers in the child and adult protection services divisions. Open Space is also requesting four fixed assets, for a accounting machine at the fairgrounds, a water tank trailer, and items related to the fairgrounds' maintenance shed project and storage facility project. Overall, there is a net general fund impact of about $651,000 and a total of $3.5 million in revenue and $3.1 in expenses being requested. With that, do you have any questions on any of the supplemental requests?
Questions from the board? Saying no, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on adoption of the second quarter supplemental appropriation resolution? Okay. Saying no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask, if there are no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I shall move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Our second public hearing this morning is Case P-16-017, Falling Water Final Plat, and our presenter is Mr. Bill Skinner, Senior Planner, Public Works and Development. Our attorney is Mr. Robert Hill, Senior Assistant County Attorney. Mr. Hill, would you set the foundation, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This has been properly noticed by publication, mail, and posting. The board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Morning, Commissioners. Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. P-16-017 is a final plat. It is, as stated, called Falling Water in the county's archives. It's a plat for five residential lots, one tract for cul-de-sac, one potential tract for detention. It's located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Mexico Avenue and South Beeler Street in the Four Square Mile area. The land's currently vacant. There hasn't been anything constructed on it, and we have Jesse from JLW Investment LLC as the applicant who's proposing this plat to eventually come in and build five single-family detached residential homes. The plat provides lots that comply with the underlying zoning. The result will be slightly higher than the recommended zoning in the Four Square Mile subarea plan, which we like to have on record. However, this zoning has existed since long before the adoption of the subarea plan. In all preceding situations, we consider that zoning to be an entitlement that's in place, and in this case, staff is fully supportive. We did not consider this to be an issue. You know, we know the Four Square Mile plan is in place. We respect that plan, but this entitlement was in place before the plan, so whoever owns the property has access to that zoning with no reservations on the part of the county staff. I think that's it. I've had minor discussions during the process. More questions? One minor concern with an adjacent homeowner who'd like to know if we can perhaps accommodate a modification to their property in the form of a potential fence where this cul-de-sac will enter. They may have headlights shining onto their property. They wanted to know if we could help them with a variance with a board of adjustments. They put up a taller fence to block that light so it doesn't shine into their home, into their patio. Staff's willing to entertain that application. We can run them through that process. Nothing else coming back from the public. This looks like a good transition between the single-family home east of here, which is on a lot not quite as large as this, and the two-story walk-up apartments west of here. It's of a moderate density. As you move from east to west, it fits the pattern of increasing densities. We have one large lot to the south of slightly lower density. We anticipate that may develop sometime. We don't know yet. There's one thing about, oh, sorry, Commissioner Jackson, last thing, and I'll be done. There was an issue with notice on this. We originally asked the applicant to send letters. We had the property posted. It was posted for a hearing on August 1st. The newspaper notice did not get in place. That's entirely on me personally. That does not reflect badly on the staff. I just missed a detail. So at that point, to, you know, we've created extra work for someone, so staff assumes the responsibilities of notice. The applicant provided me with their materials. I modified the letters, resent the letters. I went out and modified the sign, put a new date on the sign. We've got photographic evidence of that, and we did verify that we got in the newspaper at that time. So if we already hear that the notice was odd, that's on me, and we took care of it, corrected it, and ran it through our assistant attorney, who says we're good to go. I am done talking. Can I take any questions, please?
Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. You said that, I have actually two questions. You said that this is slightly higher than the density. Could you discuss that? Because I think that density is a real issue in this area, and so I'm wondering how much higher than is currently in the plan.
Yes, absolutely. The subarea plan recommends densities of between one and two units per acre in this area. This is so close to two acres, it makes no difference. We would consider two acres on, or two units per acre on two acres to pre, for the subarea plan, a maximum of four homes. This proposal is for five homes, so it's one up. It's not even a complete unit higher in density. What does that bring us to? That brings us to two and a half units per acre, I believe. So we're pretty comfortable with it. And the underlying zoning certainly allows even more than what they've brought in.
Okay. Thank you. And I agree with you with the transitional fit from my perspective. I'm wondering, I have not heard from any citizens. Have you? Have you gotten any, you know, when I read the VSR, what kinds of responses are you getting from citizens?
Just the one from the homeowner to the north, right? Property immediately north. At land recently to south. He's purchased the property south of here. It hasn't come through on the assessor's records yet, but we, you know, we've had conversations, so we know notice is in place. Concerns about the potential headlights coming down the cul-de-sac into their property.
Thank you. I guess we'll hear from the applicant.
Yeah, and which is the applicant's here, and then we even have Mark Adcock, the one citizen that's been speaking to me. In case there's anything you'd like to ask him, he's here as well. Okay, so we'll go to Jesse White, please.
Any other questions for Mr. Skinner?
Morning, Commissioners. Jesse White, JLW Investment.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Jesse L. White, 351 Glencoe Street, Denver, 80220.
Thank you. All right.
As Mr. Skinner stated, you know, this is a bit above the Four Square Mile density issues. We've taken every effort to meet with everyone in the community. We actually personally met with the Four Square Mile group, discussed all the issues that some of the they have, met with people, you know, around the community, met with all the, even with Mr. Adcock. We've had multiple conversations with him about this property. We've met with various districts, talked with the school district, Cherry Creek's water, Cherry Creek Sanitation and Water District, and, you know, we were kind of on the impression that everybody was okay with what's going on here. In fact, most of the people around the property were quite pleased to see what was taking place. The property was kind of dilapidated, if you will. Trash, you know, overgrown trees. We immediately took efforts to, you know, clean that up. It was kind of a safety, if you will. There was holes, you know, toilets and pieces, you know, sharp pieces of tile, and it was pretty obvious that there were, you know, some potential issues for juveniles in that area because of the cover. In essence, I mean, we feel this is a great thing for the community at large, and, you know, would just request approval and would be happy to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Jackson.
Just want to make sure that, again, that the cash-in-lou has been arranged and has been agreed upon with the schools and the parks and so on, and that that's, oh, that's more for Bill, I'm sorry. So that's been taken care of?
Yeah, this is a situation where we went to both Jesse and Dave Stropis for Cherry Creek Schools, and they had discussions back and forth. We have letters in our possession from Cherry Creek Schools that say they are good to go with the cash-in-lou arrangement. We can read those numbers into the record if you'd like.
They're in the VSR, so I'm okay with that.
There's no change to them, I think that's fine.
Staff, schools, and Open Space are fine, so long as JLW is fine.
Okay. I've just kind of making sure it's all.
Sure.
It's all taken care of. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Conti.
When you were initially talking to us, you kind of said that, you know, initially you'd met with the citizens of the area and all was going well, and the way you were talking, I was ready for another shoe to drop as far as that something had changed, but then that didn't actually materialize, and I just wanted to make sure that, gosh, did I miss something in what you said as I was trying to read notes while you were talking, or?
No, ma'am, I must have been rambling a little bit. I mean, I am a little bit nervous, but that's probably what it is.
Okay. All right. So all is well, and all the citizens of the area seem to be pleased, and that still remains the same today?
Yes, ma'am. As far as I understood, I mean, like I said, I've met with every, every time we've been out there, whether it be cleaning the property or making an effort to meet with other folks, meet with other, excuse me, with other, you know, either the Four Square Mile folks or the, or talking with Mr. Stropis, everyone seemed to be pleased. I guess the, I'm a little bit taken aback that there is some issue with Mr. Adcock, if you will. We've spoken to him on many occasions. He always seemed cordial and pleasant and didn't seem to have a big issue, but I'm certainly, you know, happy to, you know, do whatever I can to address this, but I understand that the issue that he has, you know, these headlights, but from engineering design standard, that is what's required to develop this property and a current zoning and required from the planning department. So I'm not sure what else can be done outside of, you know, addressing it any other way that you all see fit.
Okay. Okay. If there are no further questions, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone who would like to speak on issue, come on down, and if you'd state your name and address for the record, please, and three minutes for comments. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ron Ross. My wife, Luna, we own the property right next to Mr. Adcock on Mexico, across there. And, oh, Ron Ross, 9051 East Colorado Drive, Denver, Colorado, 80231 is our address, and the address of the property that we have is 9275 East Mexico Avenue, 80204, I believe. But in the past, we've had an issue with semi-trucks, and they come over and park on the street next to them, and we have about a 40-foot vehicle that we have to back in and out of the, of our lot there, and that's the reason we bought it, because of that lot. So I guess what our concern, and I apologize to the developers, I thought this was the meeting to come and bring up these issues, and I certainly would have done it with the person before. I've been out of this business for a little while, as you know, so I'm not really, wasn't really sure about that, but what I'd like to kind of see and maybe go over with somebody is the way the parking is going to look like in the front, and to make sure that of the houses on the other side, that we're able to go in and out with having the, everything parked on the other side, which wouldn't allow us to negotiate the turn. So if there was no parking on the street allowed across from us, or if there's going to be streets going into where those, the five houses are going to be, or what exactly would that look like, would be our concern with the way the development's going to go.
So again, Bill Skinner for staff, and this is the plan for the, this is the plat, plan itself. There's a cul-de-sac in the middle. It goes north, and then it accesses, oh, perfect. Thanks. So we have the cul-de-sac, and then the road, and then, Ron, if I'm correct, you're up in here, aren't you?
Right.
This is where Ron's house is. I'm going to ask county engineering.
No, if I could. Let's finish the public comment piece.
Perfect.
And then let's, we'll go ahead and address if there are other issues. We'll call staff back up, and they can address all issues, and we'll just leave this here, and we'll address that issue. We'll bring staff back up and address the parking and access. That's all right.
That's the comment that we had.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Mark Adcock, and I live directly to the north at 9205 East Mexico Avenue. I'm a licensed architect, a licensed general contractor, and a licensed real estate broker.
Okay.
What I understand, the only person to hold all three licenses. Done 10,000 apartment units in about five different states. I've worked with Aurora. I've done 1,000 units across the street over at Woodstream. Biggest project I've ever done was 688. Been doing this since 1979, so I've done a lot of it. And the other thing is I'm an owner of the property in question. In fact, I even had it under contract at one time. I own the two-acre parcel to the south. I have the parcel, my own personal home, to the north. So I have, you know, I know these guys have said that they've talked to me, and certainly we have talked, but I have not been told exactly what they're going to do other than a cul-de-sac with five homesites on it. I don't know fencing. I don't know the size of the houses. Don't know anything about it. So my major concern, my major concern, is that when they come out of the cul-de-sac, the headlights hit my house, and my house has a big front porch. Because I'm on a corner site, I have a very big front porch that I set out on, and it's my backyard, so I've got headlights that are hitting me. Now, that being said, I'm concerned because I don't know. I am pro-development. I wanted to develop the property myself, but what, and since I do it all the time, and I've won Home of the Year twice in the state of Colorado, I've been featured on HGTV four times. I have won Kitchen of the Year a couple of times. One of my kitchens is used in a Sub-Zero brochure. So this is my business, and I wear three different hats, so I see different things on what's going on. My main problem is that this is an R3 obsolete zoning, and it's being changed. And you're, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and this is just Urban Planning 101, is that the Fourteenth Amendment says that you have the right to your property. In 1926, the Supreme Court upheld the fact that zoning rules could overrule what's going on. 1956, the R3 zoning was put in there, and as long as you, it's my understanding, as long as you have 12,600 square feet and you follow your zoning code, which is right here, you're not supposed to be able to put a cul-de-sac in. Every house is supposed to have its own driveway to, it's supposed to have its own driveway. So I'm kind of thinking that these guys shouldn't even have to go through this. They should be able to divide this property up as long as they meet the requirements of your zoning code, and they shouldn't have to do anything else. I mean, it says so in your zoning code. Second of all, this is the Four Square Mile, and pretty much what this did is the county commissioners put together, and they said, Arapahoe County is a huge county, but this little Four Square Mile should have its own little rules. And that's what, you guys paid for it, somebody paid for this, and it says, what we like about the Four Square Mile is kind of that rural feel, and we'd like to kind of keep everything the same. What this does is it changes, it puts a cul-de-sac in. What we want is big lots with their own driveways. That's something that the Four Square What we want is big lots with their own driveways. That's something that the four-square-mile people said that it should be done, but that's being overlooked.
I'm sorry, Mr. Adcock, if you could.
Hurry on.
Yes, and wrap up your comments, please.
I'm going to put a real estate hat on. You're required to, you're requiring these guys to put an HOA in for five homes. Here is the state of Colorado's HOA requirements that every HOA has to adhere to. That's that. I really think that if they develop these houses, can you imagine trying to get five people living in a cul-de-sac to agree to all this? If you've read it, if you've read it, it's hard to comprehend and I think it's going to be a problem for five. I don't think that we should have an HOA. I think what we should do is we should go back to the rules where they build five houses on here, not have the cul-de-sac and not, and just do the development the way it's supposed to be according to your zoning codes and to, to the four-square-mile area. I think that this is going to be a situation where once they put these five houses in here, you know, somebody's not going to want to pay for redoing the cul-de-sac, nobody, somebody's going to want not to pay for the fountain and it's just going to turn into a nightmare. That's what I think.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment on this issue? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and I think there were a couple of things here that I made a note of in addition to Mr. Skinner. Why don't we first talk about the access and the cul-de-sac and the layout and parking and that kind of thing?
Sure. One question was there for Ron, I believe. Will parking be allowed on Mexico, which is the east-west street to the north? It's a street that is also shared with Ron's property. It is now and it would be in the future. We can talk about that, but given the street's minor collector status, that's just per county standard. Again, always open to discussion. The access, is the question basically, why is there a cul-de-sac?
Is a cul-de-sac allowed was what I.
Yes, absolutely.
Having more of a grid with individual drive. I mean, all of these have individual drives, but individual drives I perceived out onto either Beeler or Mexico.
Yeah, easy, or thank you, and easy. The reason that there's a cul-de-sac is Beeler and Mexico are minor collectors. There are limitations to how many private drives you can have accessing those streets directly from the private lots. This cul-de-sac would be a local, classed as a local street, so the lots can have direct access onto that. The reason the property ultimately, we've had other plans that proposed, a number of other people have proposed over the years, trying to carve this into various lot configurations, all of which were allowed by zoning. And then accessing every house driveway onto those minor collectors and it runs afoul of our engineering standards and requirements. So we haven't been able to recommend those. We don't actually believe, the applicants have chosen to come as far as a hearing once they saw they wouldn't have engineering support. This is the first solution we've seen on this property in some time that proposed driveways onto an internal street. While it's not part of the grid, it does solve our private access issues. We thought it was a pretty good solution to the problem that's been tripping everyone else up. Just one correction I want to make, there's, there's no change to the proposed zoning. This is being built to the 1956 zoning.
That's R3.
Yes.
Which we don't currently have, but it's, that's an R3 zoning.
Right.
That was, they were entitled to back then.
Yep. When the county obsoleted a number of the zoning categories in our conventional zone districts, I can't honestly tell you what year we did that. I know it predates my tenure at the county in 2004. At that time, the board said, well, we don't want to see more zoning of these types created. However, we are not going to take away the rights of the people who currently have this zoning and have an anticipation of taking advantage of it. So R3 has stayed in place and if you've already got it, you have access to it.
I can't see this really well because it's kind of light, but just, just to Mr. Adcock's concern about lights. It looks like that the access, again, is more, is more over to the east.
Right, yep, right.
Which, if, if I'm looking at this, again, this map of the total property, it probably looks like the access is more in front of 9275 rather than 9205 in terms of the access out of this.
Yes, I think, that's correct. The property line on the northern lots is right there. And I believe this is Mr. Adcock's lot on the corner, so it's across from the adjacent lot.
Okay.
Though we are still willing to, but we're still happy to talk to, to Mr. Adcock about potential solutions on his property. If he has anything he'd like to talk to us about, we're happy to.
Okay. Let's see if there was, there was one other. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you. I mean, I did kind of, Mr. Adcock, for example, sits out on his porch and I can see why he doesn't want that headlights in his. Is the property adjacent to his then liable to the same complaint? Because I would agree and appreciate Commissioner Sharp's question. It was my question as well about that offset. So is this going to be an issue for both lots across that street? I can't imagine that five houses would have a whole lot of headlight traffic, but it does happen. So what kinds of solutions or what kinds of things have been done in the past to kind of mitigate that?
Situations vary. The, the incidence of a private, well, not a private drive, this is a public street. The incidence of a street or a private drive entering a larger street across from property where there's no four-way style intersection, it's fairly common in the four-square-mile area. This doesn't come up as a concern all that often. I am aware of it. Off the top of my head, sitting next to the zoning and the Board of Variance, the staff that handles them, I overhear everything all day long that goes on there. And I know of two different situations off the top of my head where something like this has occurred. And the solution's usually been someone applied for a variance to take their privacy fence from, from six feet to eight feet or to replace their three rail fence with a solid fence. And we, it's been dealt with that way. But quite honestly, given the number of occurrences you find out on the face of the earth in the area there, it's, it's not that common a concern, but when it does come up, we take it very seriously. We have some mechanisms to help with that.
Thank you. And I think there are streetlights, I mean, there are car lights everywhere and coming in and out of any driveways. I did have one other, so in terms of neighborhood meetings where the applicant had meetings with the neighborhood and neighbors, all of that was done in accordance with our regulations, which is, I think, what, Mr. Hill, what you had said. But in terms of posting and that kind of thing and then neighborhood meetings.
Posting and notices for the staff meetings with our boards and so forth. That we know was done. We understand that JLW went to the four-square-mile area meeting. One of our staff attends that, but may or may not have a recollection of that. Typically, the staff does not attend the neighborhood meetings between.
Right, and I'm not asking if you attended, I'm just want to make sure that the applicant had, what the applicant did to reach out to neighbors to make sure that they could hear any and all concerns.
We could ask him again. We could bring Jesse back up and ask. Staff's understanding is they were taking care of it. We don't intervene in that process. We do occasionally recommend it and in some cases, we strongly recommend it. And if we know anything about the background of the area, we'll give any information we have over to an applicant and say, you know, please meet with this agency or that agency. In our understanding, they've done, they've taken, the applicant's taken all that advice and gone out and done this.
The last thing I had, and I think this is probably for the applicant, is the HOA. And I think that's their decision to not, a county decision, it would be the decision of the property owner?
Two aspects of that. When we have public improvements such as this street or detention pond, we do as a county require an agency that will take responsibility for that. That has typically taken the form of an HOA, which can distribute costs across multiple households and gives the county an agency or organization to interact with when we assign responsibility for maintenance on those properties. Should they go unmaintained, the county will go in and gently maintain them for them and bill for those services. So to be certain, we're all black and white on the issues, the county does require some form of an HOA. Now, how that HOA is administered and managed, we don't regulate that.
Because, not necessarily because there are the number of homes, but because there's, there's a, I don't know if there's a drainage swale or open space, something that has to be maintained on this property. Not because of the five houses.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep. If this were, for example, if this was one private individual who was going to own all five of those lots for whatever reason, they wouldn't have to form an HOA so long as they were going to take responsibility to maintain the public improvements and it remained under one owner.
Right.
Though I may even be in a gray area there because I think it's the creation of multiple lots that drives the requirement for an HOA.
But it's the public improvements.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hill, anything to add to that?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Since, and it looks like the upper-left corner, there's a tract. I'm guessing that's probably where the drainage improvement is going to be. So under our stormwater regulations, we actually have code that says we encourage that those community public improvements be maintained by common ownership.
Okay, great. Thank you, that clarifies that. Any questions for Mr. Skinner? Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. I'd like to get back to the discussion that the Rosses brought up about traffic. One of the things, again, in four-square-mile that we're always being asked about is traffic. These semis are a problem throughout the, throughout that area. And I'm wondering if you or your staff think or have any experience with, once those homes are in place, will that affect the parking and discourage parking of semis in that block? Of course, they'll move somewhere else to bother some other neighbor, but it is a problem. And you were about to discuss something and then the decision was to kind of finish the public comment and I appreciate that. But could you kind of talk a little bit more about the traffic on those streets and the effect of those homes on traffic and parking and stuff?
Without delving into anything like volumes or counts about which I don't have any solid knowledge, they will be required, or actually have been required, to do a traffic study. I think our engineer wants to come up and speak about that briefly. Thank you, Sue.
Good morning. Sue Liu is Engineer Division. Actually, county doesn't have any regulation on what type of car can drive on a street or park on the street. But we do require a traffic impact study if this, this, this project large enough creating a traffic impacts to the neighbor, to the roadway.
No such study has been done?
Actually, this study for five homes that does meet the traffic waiver requirement by our county center. Generally, it's about 10 trips per day per one single family, so it's about 50 daily for this, for this development, about five for the peak hour. Compared to the streets surround that about this development, minor collector, both street, and the staff feel the existing infrastructure adequately handle those additional traffic.
Thank you. I might just add as a comment that several times, the four-square-mile area has thought about some kind of district where they, I don't know, there's some kind of process they can go through to, to disallow parking of certain kinds of trucks during certain hours and so on. But they've never agreed to actually do that.
I'm not really sure if there's any, I guess, power we have to.
Not us, them, the neighbors.
The neighbors. The only thing I can think of is maybe the HOAs have some powers limited to the type of car can be parked on their private street. For the public street, I don't think an HOA has any power to it. You know, public street, it's public transportation, it's for public use.
There is a process for setting up a parking district and I believe they may have gone down that road, but I know it's, we don't have too many that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. They, the four-square-mile have looked at that parking district and decided against it a couple of times that I'm aware of. So that's something that neighbors can work with neighbors to, if they really want that, to proceed with.
Mr. Skinner?
Just to come back to Commissioner Jackson's concerns about would more homes potentially discourage, not regulate, but potentially discourage a behavior where people are parking large vehicles by the curb? Yeah, that is possible. That is something we've seen. An empty lot is essentially, if you have something you're a little nervous about doing, perhaps parking a big tractor-trailer truck at the curb. If there's no one there, there's probably not no one to, there's not anyone to offend. So yes, the, the presence of homes may discourage that, but I'm not promising that by any means. I don't know that we can predict that.
I'm sorry, I, I can't take, we've closed the public comment. But that, that certainly is something that I would suggest, Mr. Skinner, if you would talk with Mr. Adcock after. And if there are options or things that the county could look at with four-square-mile, I think, I think that would be very, would be appropriate.
Okay, we can do that.
So, I apologize, sir. Mr. Baker, or Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. I heard somewhere in some of the testimony today about a fountain. And I just was wondering if that was in tract A at the drainage easement, or was there a fountain being mentioned?
That wouldn't know.
Okay.
It's a plat, so.
Okay, so that could come up later.
Understanding the Commissioner's question, we're here for property lines and, and roadways.
Thank you.
Now, one thing to keep on record is these will be eventually zoned lots. The next step will be to move through construction plans for streets and detention. But as far as the homes being built, they'll move straight into a building permitting process.
Okay. I just have one final thing and that is, as they move into that process, to be sensitive to the concerns about driveways and light and that kind of thing. I think that with, with the placement of, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to look something like this. But I think in terms of the development, final development and layout of the property, to be looking at those kinds of things and ways to mitigate that for neighbors.
Okay, will do.
So. Any questions, additional questions for the applicant? Any questions, additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Saying none, okay. Commissioner Jackson, I will enter to the motion.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your comments there. I was going to, as part of my motion or the introduction to the motion, just mention that we certainly wanna be sensitive to the neighbors around, and any time that you are doing an infill, if you will, or developing a, a property where there are already homes nearby, you certainly want to be sensitive to the folks that are already there, 'cause it's a disruption in how it, how it is now and maybe what their ideas of what should be there could be. So, given all that, in the case of P-16 dash zero seventeen falling water plat, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following two conditions. One, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address public works staff comments and concerns. And two, cash-in lieu requirements will be satisfied before the final plat document is recorded.
Okay, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Conti. Motion made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Conti. Any further discussion or questions? Saying none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Real quickly, I did wanna, and thanks, everybody, for, for being here on that issue. Is there anyone here who is here on the Sky Ranch? Okay. I just, if, if you were, we had that on the agenda, but it has been moved because of a posting issue by the developer to October 3rd, I believe that's the new date, so. Okay, we'll move forward to our next public hearing, which is Bennett Solar USR, case U-17 dash zero zero one. Our presenter is Mr. Sherman Fair, Senior Planner, Public Works and Development, and our attorney is Mr. Robert Hill. And, Mr. Hill, would you set the foundation, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a solar electrical generation facility, and this, for use by special review, the case has been properly noticed by posting, mailing, and publication. The board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner? Oops, sorry. Mr. Fair.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You're on a crack here, I guess.
The applicant, Bennett Solar LLC, and property owner, Van K LLC, are requesting approval of a use by special review for a solar power plant. The solar power plant is 10 megawatts on approximately 80 acres located east of the corner of Brick Center Road, or County Road 129, and Mitchell Road, County Road 6. Staff and planning commissioner are recommending approval with five conditions of approval based on the findings contained in the staff report. There is a minor correction on number two condition of approval, a portion of which you'll see on the paper that I passed out with the draft motion, has been crossed out because it's no longer, or it's not applicable to this case. Are there any initial questions?
Questions for Mr. Fair? Got it right that time?
I'll introduce Michelle Zimmerman, who's the applicant's representative.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. Michelle Zimmerman with Cypress Creek Renewables. Okay, if you can get my presentation up in here. Give me a test top. There we go. Great. Thank you. So, we, we're here to present a bit more about the project, and I also have with me my, our project engineer for Cypress Creek Renewables, Jeff Weber, who can talk a little bit more about the overview of a utility-scale solar project, which I think may, may be helpful. So, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and bring, have Jeff give us the overview first, and then I'll come back up and talk specifics about the Bennett Solar project, if that's okay with you. Great.
I think there was a question, and I will go ahead. If you could state your address, the solar, just to make sure we know where you're located.
You bet. 400 North Park Avenue, Breckenridge, Colorado 80424.
Okay, great, thank you.
How's this?
Sounds good.
Hi. My name's Jeff Weber. I live in Oakland, California, 2919 Magnolia Street, area code 94608. So, I just wanted to start off this presentation first with an overview of Cypress Creek Renewables as a whole, and then I'll jump into the really fun stuff, all the technical details about solar power. And, you know, apologies if this is old material for you folks, or if it's brand-new, great. Solar, like what we're developing, it's not necessarily new, but for Arapahoe County, it is new for this region and this community. There are some similar projects in Colorado that have been around for a little while. There's some out near the airport, very similar to what we're proposing today. But I do like to dive in and jump into the details and open up dialogue and ask all the questions that you guys may have. A little bit about my background, I've been with Cypress Creek for a little over two years now, in the solar industry for about five, going on six years. Background in physics, and I have a master's in solar energy engineering. The specific work that I do for Cypress Creek, I kinda get my hands in almost every project we develop. I do a lot of the energy simulations. So, this is taking in system design, local weather, expected sunlight on an average year, and then I work with our real engineers, I call them, 'cause they're actually real engineers, and our finance teams to make sure that these projects get built and they live up to expectations and they function for their expected lifetime. So, real quick about Cypress Creek. We are a developer, builder, owner, and operator, long-term, of solar photovoltaic assets. We're located in about, I'd say, 14 states across the U.S. where we're doing most of our active development. Most of the projects we develop are in sort of the 2 to 80-megawatt range. And to give you a concept of scale, that's probably anywhere from 10 to 200 acres. And the size of the project has everything to do with the interconnection facilities, the local regulations, working with utilities, available capacity on the transmission or distribution lines, and just what's available with the various landowners that we reach out to. And then, a little quick note as to how we actually find and site locations where we do. It has to do with having a certain amount of available space. There's very specific local regulations for the size of the projects in terms of capacity. There needs to be local infrastructure for interconnecting to the grid, and we wanna be a certain distance from the substations as well. The longer the distance, the longer the upgrades that we have to pay for. Eventually gets too cost prohibitive to do so. So, that limits our available range to a, a number of parcels, and we, we reach out directly to landowners. Our landowners come to us. We negotiate a sale or purchase agreement for access to the land, and then development can start from there. I'd say our busiest states, just for, to think about where we are most active, North Carolina, by far a most active state. A lot of folks wonder why North Carolina is the second-biggest solar state in the Union. It's a magic combination of economics and favorable regulatory policy, and some kind of adventurous utilities as well. Duke and Dominion and Duke Energy Progress. South Carolina, New York, Texas, Oregon, those are our next most active states. Where we're developing most of our early projects, though, states like Illinois, Michigan, a lot of funny states like this, but this is really a snapshot of where solar is today. It's, it's no longer a technology that needs to have a lot of sunlight all year long, like you would see in the Southwest. The economics actually work just about anywhere that utilities are able to capture the value of solar and then work it into the grid. All right. A quick warning, this is gonna be an exercise in information overload. Please stop, ask questions as they come up. I'm here for you guys and happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, just a quick snapshot, how did we get here where suddenly you have solar power, like the facilities that we're proposing today and the one in the picture? It's the, if you look at all the new power project capacity installed last year, solar was about 60% of all new power projects coming online. The remaining percentage was wind and natural gas primarily. The existing fleet of power projects in the United States are aging and they're decommissioning them. Coal power plants, hydropower plants aren't really being developed anymore. Nuclear power plants aren't really being developed anymore, there's the occasional ones. So, as these are phased out, modern power plants are starting to come in, mostly natural gas, wind, and solar is gonna be sort of the vision of the future. And for solar in particular, prices have fallen about 62% over the last five years. So, much in that is economies of scale. There's the ability to produce high efficiency-- Oh, yeah, please.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Conti? Thank you, Madam Chair. When you say prices have fallen 62%, what are we talking about? The price falling on the actual units themselves, the kilowatt-hour, the, or something in between? The pipeline, the, the storage? What, what are we talking about?
Specifically, what I'm talking about is all of the equipment, technology, and what we call soft costs, which is, you know, the cost to develop and to hire labor to build the project. So, everything required to physically go from an undeveloped parcel through, you know, the full development permitting process to a fully constructed facility. Most of the cost reduction is in the equipment itself, mostly the solar panels. In 2009, the cost of one of those solar panels was about, I think it was about $5 per watt, and today we're looking at about 30 cents per watt. But prices have fallen across the whole range of, of the entire, you know, PV facility. Yeah. Now, in terms of the rates, the rates that, which these projects are selling power to the grid, those have fallen dramatically as well. And to give you an idea, in the 2000s, when the technology was really expensive and it was new and nobody was really sure what role in the future blend of energy projects it was gonna, this type of technology was gonna play, you couldn't actually make it work without, like, insane above-market rates for these little demonstration projects. And so, people would be, you know, developing, developing these relatively small projects and selling power for almost 10 times the cost of the average power being sold to utility. Well, that was necessary to, for people to kinda get a feel for it. And some of the more adventurous states, like Colorado was one of them, and California being another one, they had a few incentive programs to really explore what this was like. Now that costs have fallen, these incentives are all gone, and now solar is required to sort of stand on its own against other equivalent power sources interconnecting to the grid. And so, the rates that power is now being sold is at or below what your typical rates are for selling power to a utility to then turn around and sell to the consumer. I can talk a little bit more about what those rates are in, in a little bit. I don't wanna lose everybody right at the start here. But just a couple quick statistics, it is a very rapidly growing industry. 24 gigawatts of solar were added to the grid in 2016. That was about close to half of what's currently installed total. And the employment sector is one of the most rapidly growing sectors in the United States. One in 50 new jobs created last year were in the solar industry, and the total volume of solar workers is growing along with the need for this power. Very quick clarification, there's two types of solar technology that we know of. Solar thermal, very simple, sunlight in, heat out, just like hanging your clothes up to dry in the sun. In terms of engineering, though, and generating power, it's quite complicated. You have to focus the light, which requires a lot of moving parts, mirrors to reflect the light up to a central receiver. You need a heat transfer fluid, usually boils and boils water and runs a steam turbine. And so, the engineering's very complicated, they're prone to failure, they're a little dangerous, and they're just not the way that the industry is going. This died out in around 2009, 2010. I doubt we'll see any more large projects like this. So, what we focus on is solar photovoltaics, sunlight in, electricity out. The phenomenon's actually quite complicated. There's a lot of quantum mechanics and very precise material science that goes into the development of these panels, but the actual final product is really simple. It's just like a pane of glass encapsulated by aluminum, and they get mounted out into the field. So, the engineering's very simple, and along with that comes the favorable costs that we see. There's also two types of racking systems, fixed tilt and then what we call single-axis tracking. And to give you a sort of a concept of what single-axis tracking looks like, because this is gonna be the design for the project that we're proposing, the tables of panels lie flat, and then they move east-west like this. The actual movement's quite slow, just as fast as the sun moves in the sky, so they're not very exciting to watch. They don't move very quickly. The reason why we would choose one over the other, you can only really take advantage of the extra sunlight you're getting by tracking the sun if you have a lot of direct light. So, if you're in a region that gets a lot of cloud cover, namely, in, in like the state of Oregon is a perfect example, everywhere west of the Cascade Range, you get a lot of that cloud coming in off the coast. All our projects that are being built west of the Cascades are fixed tilt. East of the Cascades, however, it's similar to Colorado, a lot of direct sunlight, so all our projects there are single-axis tracking. As far as the technology goes, you know, these projects are designed by fully licensed engineers. They have to follow the National Electric Code. Erosion, stormwater, and sediment control plans have to be submitted to get your permitting. And then, most importantly, for, you know, fire safety, any sort of power plant safety, we make sure that the local fire protection agencies have access to the lots to get into the, the power plant. They know the exact disconnect mechanisms, they have a full action plan for anything that may happen on-site. It's very, very rare for anything to happen on-site, but they're prepared for, in case of that scenario. And just like any power plant, there's perimeter fencing. The fencing follows the National Electric Code, it can either be seven-foot or six-foot with three strand barbed wire, or I believe in this case, we're opting for a taller fence just to keep out wildlife that can jump over the fence, to keep them from getting inside and hurting themselves. The panels themselves, the, the ones that we'll be using for this project are crystalline silicon. This is the most common technology that you see. It's all the blue panels, and sometimes there, there are black panels that sit on top of people's roofs. And it's about 90, perhaps even more so now, 90% of all the panels on the planet are made of this material. And it's made from high-grade silicon, so the most abundant element on Earth. Some people would argue that there's dissolved oxygen and everything, and you can make a technical argument that that's the most abundant element on Earth, but in terms of where we can get our hands on silicon is absolutely everywhere. So, very similar to beach sand, but we, the, the industry goes for a much higher grade quality so that they can grow these crystals, make thin wafers, and then layer them onto the, onto the back sheet and wire them into the photovoltaic panel. Everything is then encapsulated by aluminum, tempered glass on the front to protect against hail and other damage, and that's your panel. It's pretty much as simple as that. As far as degradation goes, there's no, nothing in the panel that can actually leak into the environment. It's just, it's a solid state, fully crystalline, very similar to a pane of glass. It just sits out there in the field. Nothing can leak, nothing can biodegrade or enter the environment. One of the biggest concerns that we really like to address and mitigate those concerns in every way possible is the concept of light being reflected off of the panels. It sounds a little tongue-in-cheek, but it is true. The, the concept is to absorb as much light as possible. The panels themselves, they have surface treatments so that any light that comes in actually reflects. It, it hits like the microtexture on top of the photovoltaic cells so that it's reflected and absorbed. and absorbed as much as possible within the cell itself. And then the surface of the glass has anti-reflective coating and treatments on it as well. That being said, you can't stop all of the light from, sorry, you can't absorb all the light, so some of it does end up getting reflected. So the real discussion is how much and where. So it's actually a very small percentage of the light, probably less than 5%, actually reflects off of the panel. And the really important thing is in which direction. Now, for a single axis tracking project, all of the light that you're going to be reflecting is going to be heading right back towards the sun because the panel stays always oriented towards it. So for a ground observer, there's never really going to be a situation where even if you were to stand as close to the panels as possible in the full noonday sun, you'd have to stand over it and then you'd be, your shadow would be blocking the light in the first place. So for a single axis tracking project, the risk there is minimal if not zero. For a fixed tilt project, and I repeat, we're not developing that here, there is some light that is reflected at incident angles that aren't directly back towards the sun, but all of them are relatively high towards the sky. As an example, those two images there show for Colorado where the sun is positioned at summer at noon and where it's positioned winter at noon. And in both cases, even with the summer at noon, you have the light going back towards the sky almost primarily. So you'd have to be standing almost directly over it, right within the facility to actually receive any direct light. The point is, no impact on neighbors or parcels adjacent to the property. There is one piece of equipment that generates a significant amount of noise in the sense that you can hear it. These are the inverters. So the inverters convert the DC electricity from the solar panels into AC electricity, which we can then interconnect to the grid. And they do generate a noise during the middle of day when there's peak power production. So in terms of the amount of noise, at 150 feet, you can't hear it behind ambient rural background noise. So the goal is to then put it as far away from any adjacent parts of the parcel that someone from the outside may be able to hear. The good news with solar and where we can locate the inverters is that we have all the freedom to put them wherever we want. There's no actual impact to the performance of the facility if we locate it in one corner of the array or directly in the middle. This is also a theme with these projects is sometimes, you know, we'll talk about how high are the panels going to be, and we can say, oh, it depends between six and 10 feet or, you know, what, where are you going to be building panels or how? And we're unable to really speak in specifics, and this isn't due to a lack of planning or control, it's really, it doesn't matter. We can design these things to fit whatever works best for the parcel and the community and the neighbors. So in the context of the inverter pads, we always place them right in the middle of the array, usually with a minimum of a 500-foot distance between any of the, you know, borders of the parcel and where the project's built, where the inverter's located. So there really is no way anyone's going to be able to hear the thing during the middle of the day. And it goes without saying, at nighttime, everything shuts down, there's no sound, there's no lights. Same thing goes with electromagnetic fields, and I only speak of this because there's a lot of misconceptions about electromagnetic fields and concerns. Often, it speaks of, you know, houses and people that grow up next to high voltage transmission lines, usually they can hear them buzzing from inside the house. And there's anecdotal and some evidence of people having health impacts from this. And so this is where I think a lot of the concern about EMFs come from. EMFs themselves are not bad, everything in nature generates them, so I'm generating one right now, the computer is throwing electromagnetic fields into the room, these microphones. There's some good infographics you can download that show you the EMF strength of your blender in your house, and it's surprisingly high. So what I like to do then is put it in the context of what's important. And what's important is what you can measure above background levels and also relative to other things that are sort of omnipresent in our lives. So background levels, the earth's magnetic field is what we consider background level. 150 feet from the inverter, you can no longer detect any electromagnetic field even during peak power production above background energy levels. Once again, with the position of it, there's no way that anyone is going to be spending a significant amount of time around it, nor even if they did, would have any health impact whatsoever. And then for context as well, even if you were to set up camp right next to the inverter and spend all day, every day for the rest of your life there, the amount of power in terms of the electromagnetic fields that's coming off of it is far less than what you get from your overhead, like wooden pole, three-phase power lines that run up and down everybody's street. So there's really nothing significant about the project in terms of EMS. The panels, everything else, it's really, you can't even detect anything unless you get right up next to them. I also like to spend just, I'm almost finished with the technology section, by the way, just so, you know, I'm not taking too much time, but I do like to spend just a quick moment to talk about the economics. Because there is a lot of misconception about the cost of renewables, the cost of solar, especially with how rapidly costs have declined over the last few years, most conceptions are even out of date. And so just to explain sort of how the overall economics work and how we decide when a project is worth developing, building, and then operating over its lifetime, we start with the weather record. And so we've had satellites collecting data across the United States, most of the world for about 20 years. And what that does is it gives us a long-term historical weather record, so we know both how much sunlight to expect on an average year and how much sunlight to, how much that sunlight can vary from year to year, because this is also very important. The next piece of the analysis is then to put in our optimal system design, so we look at fixed tilt or single axis tracking, we look at various combinations of how many panels, we can squeeze the panels closer together to have more panels in the field, but then they may shade themselves earlier or later in the day, so there's a trade-off there. We explore a lot of these different variations, we come up with a design that works the best. And then coupled with the sunlight record and the weather record, we now have an understanding of expected energy produced on a year or a monthly basis, whatever we need to know. And then comes in the power purchase agreement with the utility. PPA's typically last anywhere five, 10, 15, up to 25 years, most of them are between 10 and 15 years. And they guarantee power purchase from the facility for that period of time. So you take your revenue agreement, you take your expected energy production, and now you have expected annual revenue or expected revenue on a monthly basis. So all of that goes into a financial model, which takes into account the cost to develop and build, own and operate the project. If the project costs, which, you know, have declined rapidly over the years, and ongoing operations and maintenance are less than the expected revenue over the lifetime of the facility, it has economic legs and will proceed with the project. Almost every solar project developed, being developed concurrently in the United States because of how inexpensive these are to build now, they're all economical. And they're economical from the moment that we interconnect and it's off and it's operating. Doesn't change over time. And then, last slide, talking about the technology, often it's talked about the useful life. And so, you know, there's a lot of equipment out there, what happens at the end of its useful life? Well, first off, useful life is when the facility can no longer generate power because of some failure. And believe it or not, the limiting factor in these power projects is the steel that goes into the racking. Eventually, the steel rusts, you can, we apply galvanized coating, it depends on the soil corrosivity studies because we do geotechnical analyses. And these projects are expected to last anywhere from 35 to 40 years, but it really is just the steel. The first panels that were developed similar to the ones today, I grabbed an image, this is out in Davis, California, at the PV US Aside. I've been there a couple of times, it's kind of like the fossil record or where like the little like fish crawled out of the mud and then died into this, and you see all these like crazy experiments people had, and then out of it comes the ones that work. And so the very first solar PV panels are still operating, they're not operating that well, but they're about 60 years old, they still work. The inverters are usually refurbished, there's modular components inside, when the components were out, they just swap them out, or they'll physically remove them and replace them with, they'll recycle all the parts and replace them with an equivalent piece of machinery. And the transformers themselves last for, oh my goodness, more than 50 years. It's the same ones that are in parking lots, they're about the size of a, like the green sealed containers that control the voltage of the array. So it really is the steel. So everything within the facility has value in terms of recycling, so it all gets taken away, salvaged for that value. The modules themselves, the silicon's quite valuable, so everybody wants to recapture that. So at the end of the life, the salvage value is, like currently would exceed any expected cost of removing the facility. But, you know, whether it costs, you know, like one cent per watt or negative one cent per watt, there's a little uncertainty in predicting what the cost of steel will be in about 40 years. But everything has this value that is, you know, believed to recoup any cost of having to salvage, remove the facility, if that was what was deemed to be done at the end of the project's useful life. So after that, just a couple of pictures for scale, but really, I'd like to open up two questions or just turn over to Michelle to continue with the discussion about Bennett Solar, the specific project we're talking about today. But if you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out.
I think you have questions on his or on the specific project?
On the technical.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Holland.
That was an excellent presentation, I want to thank you. We here in Colorado are very proud of the fact that our National Energy Lab in Golden was one of the leaders in the development of solar energy and has been able through its research to essentially lower the costs and increase the power of our solar panels. So I will withhold any questions until after the other presentation, thank you.
Commissioner Baker. Can you discuss the methods used to maintain these in place to prolong cleaning, maintenance, lubrication of the movable parts, that kind of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a few different, I'll start with the movable parts. With this type of project, there's really only one piece of equipment that moves, and it's the trackers themselves. There's a number of different tracking companies that manufacture the racking themselves and just to give you a concept of our typical engagement, well, they have their prices down so low that they usually bill by the pound now, it's not really about the footage, which is kind of interesting, shows how efficient the market is getting in terms of the technology when you have margins that are that thin and close to commodity prices, so it's really the price of steel is dictating it. There's a number of different ways that they actually develop the trackers, and each of them has different tolerances and undulating terrain. So all that aside, you have what your typical like tracker block, and so you have all your rows sort of like laid out in parallel, and there's a driver arm that connects all of them and a motor that will push the driver arm and twist all the panels. So that motor would have some internal mechanism that would need to be lubricated or serviced once in a while, would typically sit on a, maybe a concrete pad about this big or just a little bit bigger, depending on the motor themselves. The newer trackers that we're starting to look at that are coming out are actually quite sophisticated, where there's a little hydraulic machine that has two pistons, and it will sit, one of them will sit at the end of every single row, so now you have a motor determining the orientation of every single tracker row, and the pistons will move this way to like, to make the array follow the sun in the way necessary. The reason why the industry is going to that design is because most sites in the US aren't perfectly flat, and if you want to perfectly control shading angles, what the panels will do towards the end of the day, they eventually reach maximum rotation range and the sun will then, where they can no longer follow the motion of the sun. So to prevent the shadow from sweeping and causing inter-row shading, they'll do something called backtracking, where they'll actually start to move in the opposite direction to lower their shading angle. Well, if you have undulating terrain and one row is higher than the other, you can't perfectly control the shading angle unless you can individually track all of them. So we expect in terms of maintenance on the tracking and the racking system, you're probably looking at maybe the first year, somebody coming out once a month, and then over time, that tends to drop off as people work on any of the individual quirks of that project site. And that's going to be true for almost any of the other equipment out there. The inverters themselves, I mean, some of our projects, we haven't had to visit them yet, other projects, there's been someone out there almost every week working on one problem inverter until it gets resolved, and then usually after the first year, that goes away. So on average, you're expecting someone to visit the site in the first few months, maybe, you know, out there almost every day, and then later on, that drops off to maybe once every two or three months or as needed. For the panels themselves, you don't have to do anything except clean them once in a while. The cleaning is really a site-specific, it's a function of what the local area is being used for, how much rainfall you get. In Colorado, we'd be expecting to probably clean them two or three times a year, which is typically either water or a feather duster, but that would be a truck that drives out with a tank to do that. But we'd have to consider this particular project site. I know that for the industry itself, pretty much anything east of the Rocky Mountains, cleaning is pretty infrequent. It typically rains enough for enough of the year, or the dirt buildup isn't significant enough to offset the cost of having to pay someone out to come out and clean it. So that's typically what the maintenance usually looks like. And then the occasional professional from the utility to do inspections of the medium voltage interconnector, whatever interconnection facilities are there.
Commissioner Baker. One more follow-up, just the water you said would come out in a truck.
Yeah, if it was needed.
Wouldn't be from the site?
No, no, we wouldn't need to have any infrastructure whatsoever, yeah. The amount of water needed is not very much, it's, someone puts a little tank on their back and they spray it down, someone comes with a rag or something and wipes it off.
The water would be obtained from the public?
We would, yeah, we would contract it through a company that, you know, acquires water in whatever means that they do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Zimmerman, we'll see if there are any questions about the specific project.
Great, well, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Jackson.
Were you going to speak first?
Yes. Maybe I should not ask a question, maybe you'll answer it before I have a good chance.
Yes, perfect, and that's, and thank you, that's one of the wonderful reasons to have Jeff, have our project engineer come through and answer a lot of the questions before they even come up. So I will jump into the Bennett Solar specific project, and just a few slides on that, and then, yes, certainly open for, and feel free to interrupt with them or to stop me with questions. So the Bennett Solar project is just south of Bennett. As Sherman mentioned, it's off Brick Center and County Road 6. We are looking at a 10-megawatt project, it's about 71 acres, the parcel is about 80 acres. And we, right now, our maximum, we talked about how we can adjust things to be anywhere from 10 feet high to 12 feet high, whatever we need to do. Right now, our proposed maximum height is 12 feet. I don't know that we'll ever actually reach that. We say that just in case we've got any kind of topographic challenges where we've got one area a little bit higher than the other. So again, it's a single axis tracker, it is an eight-foot tall chain link fence and with privacy slats anywhere where there's going to be right-of-way visible. The reason we went with eight foot is because of Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they recommended and they asked that in this area, because we do have, you know, as you know, we do have deer and pronghorn and various different animals, that they just really want to make sure we don't have any situation where we've got a doe and a fawn separated or anything like that. As Jeff mentioned, of course, we do have operations and maintenance folks, we will have one to two full-time staff for this project doing operations and maintenance post-construction. So anything that happens, we will have someone out there that would notice, we also will have signage that if, you know, if a neighbor, someone were to notice anything like that, a deer getting inside the power plant, there's a signage where they could call us or local contact information. Oh, one other thing I wanted to, the customer for this project, because this is utility scale, the customer is Intermountain Rural Electric Association. So it's not, I know some of the other projects have been solar gardens, which is different where the customer is both utility and you and I, all the ratepayers, so. This is just the layout of the project in general, of course, it's, the far left there would be Brick Center, the far bottom would be County Road 6, so the array is in from Brick Center Road. Just some photos of what a single axis tracker project looks like, these are in eastern Oregon, so it's kind of similar landscape, a little bit different. And then getting into some of the benefits, some of the community benefits, what we like about solar, while this is a long-term agreement, it does allow for this area to go back into agriculture or other purpose at the end of the life of this project. It does allow for the landowner to make some economic gain, this is going to be a lease project, it's not a purchase, we're not purchasing the land, we're leasing it from Banquet. So they will continue to get payments and make some money off the land, which would be, which is of course always good for any of our landowners. We've talked a little bit with the local, with Mark, the local assessor. We've talked a little bit with the local, with Mark, the local assessor about property taxes, that is a state-assessed property tax, but some economic benefits. And then, of course, the benefits to Intermountain Borough Electric Association. Some of the economic information, I mentioned the O and M jobs during construction, local, locally sourced jobs are about 23. Construction is going to take about three to four months. There will be, you know, upwards of 100 jobs created from this project during construction, but some of those jobs are are off-site or coming from areas outside of the Strasburg, Bennett, Watkins, Denver area. Let's see. And this information, I know Commissioner Holland, you had mentioned Enrel, and this information where we get all the economic information comes straight from Enrel. They have a a project called the JDI, the Jobs and Economic Development Impact Modeler. And so we put all of our projects through the JDI model from Enrel. And Enrel's been great about really developing a lot of those tools that you guys need to make decisions that have with all the information to know if you're benefiting the community. And Jeff did talk a little bit about how we can cite these projects. Of course, we want to make sure that we are citing everything with as many constraints in mind as we can. Of course, we don't want to put these things in wetlands, we don't want to put a solar array in an area that it doesn't work best, from environmental concerns to product, to energy generation concerns. So, you know, our our commitment, of course, is that we want to make sure we're we're developing high-quality solar generation plants, but also that we have strong community relations and we're not trying to go in and and, you know, put projects in the middle of a migration zone or something like that. I circled community relations. I just wanted to talk about what we do for any of our projects and you'll see us again, hopefully, fingers crossed, we've got a couple more projects coming up in Arapahoe County, like I say, near Strasburg and Byers and some of those areas. So one of the first things we do before we ever even go to zoning, sometimes before we even go into pre-app with with our case planner and the county engineer is we send out letters with just a general, hey, here's the land we're leasing. You live within, our radius, of course, is all adjacent properties. And then sometimes we'll go a little further if there are any adjacent properties, just to make sure if there are any community or neighbor concerns, that we're trying to give them a chance to, here's who we are. We haven't even submitted a project. We, this is what we want to do, but let's talk about concerns, let's talk about community concerns. In fact, for for this project, for Bennett, when we sent out, the first one I sent out, I somehow or another managed to expand my line to cover the neighbor's property and he called me right away and said, I don't think you're leasing my property. Why, why am I on here? So that was a pretty quick backpedal on that one. So it, we do like to make sure we do community outreach. And that covers most of the Bennett project itself. Any questions specific to Bennett or or Jeff, we're wide open.
Questions? Yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you. I just want to say, first of all, I just love science. I thought the explanation of the of the panels was fascinating, so I'll just say that. But I have a very low-tech question. The fencing, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because originally you stated something about barbed wire and I was like, oh, to my mind, that's not a good thing to put out there. But what's, how do you make a privacy fence out of a chain link fence? Do you use those aluminum weave-y things and those get kind of?
So if you can picture, and I do have some photos I might be able to pull up, but, and I agree, the wires, and that was certainly something CPW said, we don't want wires. And that's just a national, that's to kind of the base for National Electric Code is either a seven-foot fence for any power plant, for any energy generating plant. So that's where the wire comes from, it's part of NEC. Privacy slats, if you can picture some of the substations you may drive by when, you know, you're you're going from point A to point B, most of the substations you see will have a chain link, usually seven-foot, and they'll either have the, they're not usually wooden in eastern Colorado, but they'll usually have that, it's almost a vinyl, and it's oftentimes it's green and it 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 does kind of go between the chain link there.
Yeah, it's woven, kind of.
Yeah.
So but you're going to have somebody out there so it doesn't get all tacky and broken and?
Right, and that's part of having the operations and maintenance, having one to two full-time people that are making sure that we're keeping those things up. That's a part of our lease, that's a part of our agreement, that we make sure, anything like that, because of course, you know, we get so much sun and things dry out, that kind of stuff with the wind, it can break, it can shatter, and we need to make sure we're, we don't want those things flying around and and we want to make sure they're getting replaced if they do break.
And may I, if I could have one more question? I'd like to ask about during construction, there are folks who live out there and I'm wondering if you're going to have, you know, hours, keep hours and keep the lights down and be considerate of the neighbors while you're constructing the?
Yeah, absolutely. I know the county has, when we go in for building permit, that'll be, the county has some pretty clear standards on hours and then we've talked a lot about dust abatement during construction because I know that can be pretty, pretty rough out there. So again, with a question about the water trucks during construction, we will have water, dust abatement through water and it'll be tanks on water trucks coming in from wherever we source that. So there won't be any water coming from the groundwater at source. It'll either be if that dust abatement contractor can come from Bennett, we'll do it from Bennett if it needs to be, Watkins, we'll go there, but it'll be a municipal source wherever that company gets their water.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker.
A lot of times during construction, you're going to be bringing this equipment in in very large trucks, I assume. And this may be a question for Sherman as well as any of our other public works, but I know that for the wear and tear on the roads, a lot of times we are asking the oil and gas companies, for instance, to help maintain those roads. Have you been asked about them? Go ahead.
Thank you. Currently, our our application states that we are going to bring the road back to its pre-construction conditions. So when we go in, when we're getting our building permit and when we go in for construction, we'll be documenting what the road, the condition of the road and we will be bringing it back to that condition. That's our current, that's just what we have currently.
Good. I didn't see plans for any other structure besides the pads going in on this. If you have one person out there full-time, if I heard that correctly, you need to provide some restroom facilities or some kind of health and comfort if if that's an agreement with the leaser of the property or?
And and I apologize, I didn't give enough detail and background on what that one to two full-time O and M employee is. So we have, so you're right, the the equipment pads in the main structure, of course, the access drive to Bennett Fire Protection Standards and County Standards is another structure that will be in there. The one to two operations and maintenance, it's a, it's a combination of hours over over time of people. So we do have folks in our main area that are, this is going to be remotely monitored. So of course, we we make money because this thing is producing power. So if it isn't producing power, that's why we have a full operations maintenance team monitoring everything that's happening on the site remotely. If something comes up, you know, as Jeff mentioned, we might have a problem inverter or something needs maintenance, we get a, an alarm in the motor that maybe something isn't tracking correctly, then we'll send out local, our local contractor. And so it's, that one to two is really just an addition of all the hours that make up 2,000 hours or, in this case, 4,000 hours.
One last question. On the photographs showing the site, the view to the south shows a residence.
Yes.
Is that the person who's leasing you this property?
No, it's not. And the person, the the landowner is Banquet LLC and that's Rick Van Dyke is the landowner and they actually live just, if you go north and a little bit to the west, they do live in Bennett, but it's not near the site.
So there is a neighbor next?
There are two neighbors. Yep, there's the Carroll Ranch and then there's another neighbor to the west.
And you've had personal contact with those two neighbors?
I've certainly spoken with Mr. Stottemberg and I have not yet, I have emailed and and sent letters to the Carroll Ranch and I haven't actually had a, I've asked or written on the letter, please call me, this is my cell number, but I haven't had a chance to connect with them, so.
Understand, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. If there are no further questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Come on down.
Should I take this down? Leave it up, doesn't matter?
Oh, you can leave it, that's fine. If you just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. I'm Patrick Berenberg. My address is 4829 South County Road 129, Bennett, Colorado. My family has adjacent property to this proposed facility, also mineral rights. I received a letter along with other mineral right owners in the area. I think I have some questions more than any statements, but my first question is, what does it do to the mineral rights to the adjacent landowners or to people that my family actually has mineral rights on this property? Now, I've heard that once solar goes in, it trumps any oil, gas or gas production, probably making the mineral rights worthless for, in this case, 20 years, probably 40 years. Now, is, it's a question, is this true that the solar would be detrimental to our mineral rights? We've also, we're farmers and I've, I've actually farmed that property with my dad and we're still farming right there adjacent to it. We don't have any buildings there and, but that would be my first question, if you don't mind. And do you compensate the landowner for, for, to me, what would be a monetary loss for probably 20, maybe 40 years, maybe more? And what are the property values? I know your statistics probably show that it doesn't hurt property values, but I myself probably wouldn't want to build my house there now right next to that solar farm. I mean, there's, there's probably worse things, but it is a concern, the property value. Some of these farmers have been there, I think the Converse is probably since Homestead. And my family since the 1950s, so those, those mineral rights are really a concern because even though we don't own the land, we own part of those mineral rights and we own adjacent property, 150 acres to the north, total of probably 171, 172 mineral acres. And I've got other relatives that have mineral acres there from my family back in the 50s, the farmers. We're also a little concerned about the wildlife, the pronghorn. We've had that herd on that property and also on this property. There's a herd of antelope that's been there for also 50 years that just seem to stay there, you know, and I know I'm out of time, but the wildlife too. So thank you.
And we'll, we'll get some question, get those answers to your questions. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, I will close the public hearing. I think I wrote down about five things and I'm not sure who will actually, yeah, why don't you come back up and see how many and if staff needs to address any others or from illegal mineral rights, but?
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Berenberg, for being here. Yes, the mineral rights are certainly something that we we are very concerned about and and solar doesn't necessarily get rid of the 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 mineral rights. So what we've done is, we have a mineral, a company that has done a minerals report, tried to chase down the whole chain of title. I have that list of of minerals owners and and of course, the landowner is one of them, but there are others as well. In fact, on this property, I think there are 12 minerals owners. So our, our goal is to look at surface, surface use waivers, whether that's a surface use agreement, surface waiver, various different legal forms. And and so once we get through zoning, once we know that we have a kind of a next step, clear path, that we should keep moving on this project, then our next step is to go to all those minerals owners and say, you know, we want to use this surface area, we want to make sure that we don't have to move our panels so that, you know, you can come in and and utilize your minerals, but at the same time, we don't want to necessarily take, we're not going to be taking any rights away. So we're just looking for a surface use agreement with these minerals owners and in some cases with the leaseholders as well, if if it's that case. And certainly, so we'll be reaching out and and looking at monetary compensation terms. So we'd be looking for a surface use waiver for the term of the project, which could be anywhere from 20 to 40 years. With regard to, yeah, how long, once we, once the life of the project is over, those, the, the project is removed and every, those mineral rights are are back in place, the surface use as it is today would be the same.
So what if you, of these 12, what if not all of them want to give a waiver? What happens then?
Well, again, in part of our site selection, we look at areas that, you know, obviously there's plenty of oil and gas development in this area, but we look at areas, there's not a whole lot nearby or at least adjacent. So one, I guess, we haven't had that situation. We try to find areas where where we think we're going to be pretty, pretty fortunate on folks that haven't necessarily built or had success building oil and gas production in that area. And there is, you know, they're certainly open for negotiation and we can move things around as needed.
I'd just be concerned about someone who, about, again, about their rights, if they, if they don't want to have a surface use, are they then, and maybe it's a legal question, are then they compelled to do that once we go through this hearing and?
I think the compelling reasons would be the terms of the agreement that we would put in front of them. I think that's what would, how we could compel them.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure I'm real clear on that, but?
Just any kind of monetary compensation to make sure that they feel like if they're giving up a surface use for X number of years, that they're doing it, that they're not giving up any opportunity monetarily.
And how do you determine that?
Well, that would go back to our legal team to to determine what kind of, what our range of negotiation is for those surface use agreements. So I'm, I'm not sure on these, the exact dollar amount yet.
So if someone did not want to, or several of these 12 did not want to go forward, are they then in a position where they have to accept some negotiation or, I mean, I'm not?
Then our project, then we can't, we, we could either build our project at great risk or we just don't build the project.
I see. Okay, so it's not compelling?
No, I would try to compel them with my giant checkbook that I don't have, but.
Right, right.
But other than that, yes, it would, it would just be, if we can't, if we can't come to agreement, then we, we either build at our own risk or no, or move the project to another location.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I think a lot of this is in legal territory, but you have a buffer area around your site, correct? And I'm just thinking that with the two-mile possibility with the fracking, that, that it would be conceivable that if there was to be drilling, it would be under your solar panels as opposed to on top and there might be some way to, again, theoretically, maybe that's not appropriate at this place and time, but it seems to me that hopefully you would be able to work this out with, between the oil company and the owners of the property and and the array as as displayed because you have a lot of empty land out there as well, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I can't make a decision for you or the homeowners or anybody else, but it just seems to me that, the question I believe he answered, and maybe our attorney can speak to this, is you do not preempt the right of the mineral owner underneath that, from all of our experience so far on this board, is the, you're only asking to use the top soil, whereas the mineral owners own what's underneath and there are many ways to access that. It's just sort of my interpretation. I, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Yeah, and I guess, and Mr. Hill? Yeah, and I guess, and Mr. Hill, if you want.
I'm not aware of any preemption. It would certainly, they would have a lease with the property owner, the surface owner, who gives, grants them the right to put that on their property. I guess there's probably a bit of, I don't know, maybe some negotiation, discussion, you know, where a wellhead could go and still access mineral rights that are beneath the utilized surface. But in terms of just a preemption, where, you know, you've granted a mineral, not a mineral lease, a authority to operate a photovoltaic cell, electric solar plant, doesn't automatically then say, okay, now there's no right to access those minerals? It's just not a matter of law. So with the lateral drilling, I think is probably what addresses that.
And I, yeah, I don't know enough about oil and gas, lateral drilling, engineering.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if there, if a drilling site needed to be on the property, that it wasn't then prohibited. And I know there are lots of.
And that's what we'd be looking to, yeah, through our surface agreements, make sure we didn't have a drilling site on the property that would require us to move our panels out of the way.
Right.
That's what we'd be looking for. And of course, by no means would be, we can't, we have no authority to force that agreement.
So as long as the mineral rights owners each have the ability to sign a surface agreement with you all and are not sort of forced into one way or the other, hopefully that can, can work out for, for the property, but I just want to make sure nobody's rights are taken away from them.
I agree. I agree, yeah, and that's not, that's not what we, we want to do more of these, not be stepping on any toes, so to speak.
Okay. I think the, and that sort of addressed the compensation as well and the mineral rights, and then had three other things, which were the question about farming, property values, and wildlife.
Yep. So the wildlife, we talked about a little bit. That's why CPW recommended the eight-foot fence. We don't want to, and we want to make sure that animals aren't getting in, because that's where, of course, the electrical, anything that could, they could either be separated or stuck inside, or, you know, we want to keep them out. That's the idea. With it being, Collar Park's wildlife did not have any negative comments with regard to migration corridor, movement corridor, or any movement patterns being disrupted. So with regard to wildlife, CPW at least didn't have any concerns, so, other than the fence height.
So are they, with regards to these animals on the property today and sort of living there, or using that, using that property for many years, that's not, Parks and Wildlife did not have any comment on that?
Their comment was that they, they did not see, they did not have any concerns or any problems with it. It's a seventy-acre area that's going to be disturbed, and so with the fence, with an eight-foot fence, the animals will be able to navigate around the actual structure.
So property values.
Property values. We do have an appraiser. It's Ron Throop with American Valuation Partners, and he's done a report, a pretty thorough report on the property values for this specific Bennett Solar itself, and I'm happy to share that report. Of course, you know, as Mr. Berenberg mentioned, that, of course, that report says, you know, looking at other comparable areas where there have been solar facilities constructed, they're mostly in areas like this where they're agriculture, they're not in the middle of major development areas, and there has not been any negative impact. Again, statistics, you know, are going to say, all of our reports, and industry, all of our reports, all of our appraisers throughout the nation, anywhere we've built, be it closer into urban area or further away, have found no impact on property values, adjacent property values.
And you could share that report?
Yeah, I can send it over to Sherman.
Okay. Let's see.
Oh, and there was one more.
And the farming.
Yep. What was the question specific, oh, will it go back to farming? Was that the question?
Yeah, does it kind of impact, or would there be any impact, I guess, adjacent?
It won't impact any, any adjacent lands. It would go back to whatever the landowner wanted it to go back to at the end of the project, end of the life of the project. The, yeah, I don't, as far as impacts to farming, I'm not sure. It will be removed from farming. The landowner will be making money instead of off cattle or grazing, will be making money from lease payments.
Okay. Commissioner Baker.
I guess I would maybe rephrase it. Have there been any instances where installation of this similar, whatever size, but a solar farm, so to speak, were adversely affected? I kind of covered the water, and that was one of my concerns, is that this plant, this industry, this location not deprive the adjacent owners of the use of either surface water or aquifer water? And I think my question was answered about that, so hopefully that gave the adjacent owner some comfort in knowing that it's not going to affect anything that you currently have as far as water rights. The other thing I would say is, or ask, is if there's been any documented cases where this type of facility has adversely affected adjacent agricultural operations in any way?
Not that we have seen, no. It's, again, it's relative to the whole area, you know, I could, I could do a kind of Google, a Google Earth image, and relative to the whole area of agriculture, this is a relatively small, you know, whatever, seventy, eighty acres, it's not small by any means, I'd love to have, you know, that, but at the same time, it's not necessarily a, we haven't found any negative adverse impacts to nearby adjacent or even regional agriculture in the area.
No crops bursting into flame, or?
Sublimation, or?
Explosions of any type?
No, we don't have.
Electrical fires starting? I mean, how safe is?
Yeah, I know, that was a big, I spoke.
Lightning is another issue.
Yep. Yeah, I spoke with Caleb at the Bennett Fire Protection District a lot about the grass fire and deer trail, I think it was, that, you know, how that, oh, that was years ago, but still keeps everybody on high alert, certainly. We have not had any, again, as Jeff, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I think.
You want to come back up to the mic?
To add a little bit of extra color to the impact on farming, as far as the parcel itself, the racks are mounted just by driven posts, so it's similar to fence posts, so at the end of the life, it's pulled out. As far as the impact of the facility on the, whatever it is you would grow, we would probably benefit if the plants didn't grow as quickly, but they, they do. So we actually, part of the maintenance is coming out there and keeping the weeds and vegetation from growing too tall. A lot of this is, we opt for more of like the passive mitigation, where we use a seed mix that has, you know, low-growth native pollinator-type vegetation, and this is, once again, I can't, I'm not an expert in what the ecology is of this side of the Rockies, but there are people here that know that, and we always, and wherever we go, we reach out to that expertise to advise us on that. As far as impacts on neighboring parcels, there's really nothing. There's no excess erosion or sediment that comes off. Usually within two to three months after the project is built, the vegetation has set into the point where it just behaves just like a field, just with a little extra cover over it. If there's any other questions, though, about farming that I didn't answer, lost my thread there for a second, just thinking about pollinators.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just with your comments, and I'm harkening back to your words about electromagnetic fields, is there anything that would make it more of a magnet for lightning and potential lightning strikes, fire, grass fires that are in the area?
Well, so, yeah, to answer your question, relative to what is there now, it'd be hard to argue that any additional structures wouldn't invite more lightning on a relative basis. As far as a meaningful basis, though, the frequency that lightning would be striking the array would be, I mean, we'd be lucky to have one strike in the lifetime of the facility, based on projects this size in this location, there's, but there is, so starting from the interconnect with the utility on, back through the facility, there's fuses and disconnects and lightning arrestors that are designed to minimize the impact on the facility. We had, this was not with Cypress Creek, but in my prior career doing more engineering consulting, there was a project in Texas that had been struck by lightning, and we had to go survey the damage, and we just ended up replacing a small portion of the array. So as far as inviting additional lightning strikes, potentially inviting more fires, the relative increase in the risk is going to be really insignificant and very hard to quantify because of how small it is and how, just, you know, limited examples of this ever happening.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Baker.
I'll be making the motion here, but I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation, and also wanted to invite any other staff comments about anything that we talked about from the resident. Any other things that, anyone? Okay, with that in mind, in the case of U-17-001, Bennett Solar Use by Special Review, I have read the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant makes any modifications to plans as requested by the Public Works and Development Department prior to the signing of the MYLARS and before any construction is started on this project. Two, the applicant shall address all Engineering Services Division comments and concerns, including but not limited to guest key right-of-way and street cut permits, a gravel roadway agreement, et cetera, or as identified, or as identified in their reports prior to the start of construction. Three, the applicant shall provide for the removal of the solar power plant if and when the solar power plant has been abandoned and is no longer functional or operational for a period of more than one year, through the use of a performance bond to Arapahoe County to be provided by the applicant before the project becomes operational, or through some other guarantee or removal of the equipment. Four, the applicant shall meet all of the requirements stipulated by the Bennett Fire Protection District. And five, the applicant shall meet all of the requirements stipulated by I R E A.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you all, and thanks very much, and we'll make sure that everything works okay on the surface. And if not, there's a phone number on there, there'll be a phone number. Okay, our, excuse me, final public hearing is Saddle Rock Highlands Preliminary Development Plan Fourth Amendment, and our presenter is Molly Orkil Larson, Senior Planner, Public Works and Development, and our attorney is, again, Mr. Robert Hill, Senior Assistant Attorney. Mr. Hill, would you set the foundation, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a preliminary development plan amendment. It has been noticed by publication, mailing, and posting of the property. The Board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Molly Orkil Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. What's before you this morning is a request to amend the Saddle Rock Highlands Preliminary Development Plan. The applicant is Resolute Investment Incorporated. The subject property is located within the Tall Grass Commercial Center, which is located at the northwest corner of East Quincy Avenue and South Piccadilly Road. This amendment proposes to allow an increase of the floor air ratio, area ratio from point six-five to one point two-five, and would apply only to Lot Three of this development. The applicant is proposing this amendment so that a seventy-nine-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot self-storage facility can be built on Lot Three. The applicant is also wanting to add architectural metal panels as a building material as part of this amendment. If this application is approved, the applicant will have to go through a specific development, development plan, and also administrative site plan. The applicant did meet with the Saddle Rock Tall Grass Homeowners Association to review the proposed self-storage building. No opposition was voiced at this meeting. Since this meeting, the applicant did get several phone calls from some HOA representatives inquiring about the FAR, and he did go through and explain to them what that meant and what it looked like. Based on the findings of the staff report, staff is recommending approval with conditions. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, the applicant does have a presentation, so I can turn it over to them unless you have some questions for me.
Questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring Chris Barnes up.
Thank you for your patience this morning. We normally do not go quite this long, so.
I learned a lot about solar.
Yeah, exactly. Me too.
Chris Barnes, seventy-three, seventy-four, South Alton Way, Suite 203, Centennial, Colorado, eight oh one one two. Just want to get this hooked up. And I will try to be brief. I'm an Arapahoe County resident, native, work in Arapahoe County, lived here my whole life, went to Arapahoe County, Arapahoe High School, so just pleased to finally be developing in Arapahoe County. I want to introduce you first to Resolute Investments. We're a local developer out of Centennial. As I said, I work in Arapahoe County. We develop medical, industrial, office, apartments, hotels, and self-storage. We're a long-term holder of real estate. What makes, what's unique about that is we build for the long term. We don't put cheap materials in. We try to become fabric of the neighborhood and build sustainably, because we're going to be there for a long time. So if there's a problem, the neighbor calls me directly, they don't call some one-eight-hundred line somewhere and get somebody who maybe will come out and maybe won't. So we're a values-based corporation. Those are values, accountability, integrity, teamwork, family, and fun, and our purpose is to enhance people's lives through real estate. And we care. That's why we presented in front of the Tall Grass HOA. I met with the neighbor owner who owns the school, and I'm buying the property from the other retail owner, so tried to cover my bases as much as possible. So why am I here? Requesting to amend the PDP to increase the FAR. The current FAR of point six-five would allow a maximum building size of thirty-one thousand square feet. The proposed FAR pushes that to sixty thousand square feet. I'm also proposing the use of architectural metal panels, and I'll show you an example of what that looks like here in a minute. And I just think it's important to point out what we already comply with on the PDP. The use is allowed, we're not modifying the setbacks, not exceeding the maximum building height, we're achieving the open space, and all other requirements of the PDP. So why do I need the increase? The point six-five FAR does not allow the size of facility that makes it economically viable. You need about an eighty-thousand-square-foot facility to net sixty thousand net rentable square feet of storage, because you have common corridors. And the type of facility that we're proposing to build is not your typical store where people drive up, open the garage door, and unload. There's one bay, one loading dock, that everybody pulls their truck into, unloads their stuff onto a cart, and pushes it through the hallway. So you need to build a bigger facility, because you're losing corridor space. And so that's why I need the FAR increase. That allows me to build about sixty thousand above ground, and I plan to put another floor in the basement, which doesn't account, does not count against the FAR per your code.
FAR, floor area ratio.
Yes, floor area ratio. Thank you. Yes, floor area ratio, thank you. Like I said, the facility will have one set of loading doors, no drive-up doors, and it will architecturally blend with the existing structure. So this is a, kind of a concept site plan. This is the site here, just to point out. You've got, that's not working, I'll use the pointer.
Where's the pointer?
Oh, right here. Perfect, thank you. So on this side over here is where the school is, and then Piccadilly's out here, and Quincy's down here, and there's a Walmart right here. And so this is the site the people accessing would enter, drive their truck around, not facing the residential, residential being up here. They would back their truck into the loading dock, unload their materials, push it through the corridors to their specific unit. Our office will be in here. So conceptually, this is what it would look like, trees on this side. There's already trees along the frontage on this main street, so that's why we're not showing any trees up here. We would add a couple more trees in here, but they did already put in the frontage trees. This is an example of a facility we built in Arapahoe County in Littleton. You can see the architectural metal panels are in the blue, the white, and the red. You can see that this doesn't really look like a self-storage facility, and this is a kind of industrial office complex, so we tailored the building to look a little bit more industrial and office, with the glass, architectural features, articulation, and there's one set of doors back here where everybody loads their materials in, and out of, and then goes to their specific unit. So what would this look like in the context of what's around it? This is the retail building that's to the south. It's one-story, but it's almost 30 feet in height. The Walmart to the west is also between 28 and 32 feet, depending on the parapet. This is the school that's just to the east. You can see it's one-story, but it's got a pitched roof, and then, so it's approximately 20 feet, and then you've got two-story home with a pitched roof at the back. And we plan to try to get above the retail building in front of us, just so that we can have some presentation towards Quincy. So our, our goal would be to be between, you know, 35, 40 feet, which is, the allowed height in this area is 50. So what are the benefits of self-storage? Some might not think there's any, but I, I do, and I have to bring those. So currently, the three-mile supply ratio is 2.7. Just to give you how that works, the national average says you need seven square feet per person of storage. This area is well undersupplied, the reason I'm here today presenting this project. The low-traffic impact is something that neighborhoods really like. A facility like this could generate, probably on the high end, 27 vehicles today, a day. The retail in front of us generates between 400 and 1,500 trips. So it greatly reduces the traffic impact on the roads, people driving by, safety. And then there's minimal light impact, low sound impact, and we're over 100 feet from the nearest home, and literally only two or three homes face us. Additional benefits, I think we're maximizing the utilization of the land. Typical self-storage requires four to six acres. This is 1.12 acres, and this removes the eyesore of typical drive-up facilities. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Baker?
The school you mentioned, is that, that's not a public school, that's a private, I thought it was a daycare facility, but...
It is. I think it's called a primrose, and I think they do, yeah, so it's daycare, and then they do some type of schooling, but not a public school, that's correct.
Thank you. I am only sensitive to a big, blue and yellow building on I-25. So I would just ask that you consider colors that are sort of harmonious with the area and that you won't be able to see from 20 miles away?
Absolutely. And the Architectural Review Committee is headed up by the master developer of the project, and we've had discussions about the color, and we'll, we'll work to blend in with the neighborhood.
Right, it's just the blue on your picture kind of stuck out.
Yeah, some people, that really sticks out, yeah.
Yeah. So, anyway, that was my only, only comment.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions for Mr. Barnes? Okay, Commissioner Baker? I think I'm getting tired.
And what, your comment kind of triggered something in my mind. You mentioned that you spoke to the Tall Grass HOA. What kind of feedback did you receive, and have you changed anything as a result of that feedback?
So the feedback was, hey, are these big trucks dangerous to the kids that are going to be in the school? Nobody loves self-storage on the front end of things, but once you start talking about the benefits of the low impact to the community, the low noise, and how we architecturally define our building, a lot of those comments went away. And so what I presented at the meeting was a picture of the existing facility and a concept site plan, like I showed you, the exact one I showed you, showing, hey, this is ultimately what's going to happen.